Well, good evening, folks. It is Tuesday, November 23. It's 7:03 PM and we are in the council chambers in Platteville, Wisconsin. And with that, I call the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville to order. Candace will start with roll call.
Isaac Shanley. Barbara Doss.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Kathy Cobb.
Here.
Jason Arts.
Here.
Lynn Parrott.
Here.
Okay, our agenda tonight starts with several public hearings. I would remind people that if they want to speak during a public hearing, there are green sheets on the back table that you would need to fill out if you're not part of staff or applicant and intend to make a statement. So we'll start then with the first of the three public hearings, which is the budget hearing and has two resolutions associated with it. So Nicola, I think we call on you.
Adam is going to start out with the presentation.
Okay, and for those in the audience, I would direct your attention to the south side of the room where you'll see a screen and I believe soon a PowerPoint.
Yep, we're just trying to get everything up and running here.
Sorry, our laptop timed out.
Sorry. So obviously, as that's coming up, I can kind of give a kind of intro into everything that's gotten us to this point. So number one, I obviously want to thank all of the city staff who worked on this budget. You know, for those that kind of want to understand the budget process, we actually as a staff start this really in May. So this has been every month, we have been updating the budget, looking at scenarios, looking at options, and then presenting those to the council. One of the things we obviously did very different this year is we have passed more of a comprehensive CIP. So that was kind of the kickstart to our budget in September. And then the months of October, we had about three different budget sessions. One was looking at the CIP. Then specifically, we looked at each individual department in regards to kind of the operation revenues, the operational decreases. And then what that has accumulated into is over the month of kind of the October and into November, staff has continued to kind of look at options and scenarios in regards to how we can essentially, you know, continue to review all of our services, providing those to the taxpayers and being fiscally responsible, as well as looking at ways that we can find new revenue sources or look at potential areas that we could either cut or decrease. Or as we've talked about and as we'll talk about further, had to look at sacrificing in the budget as well and looking at potentially having to do next year. Some of the other things obviously that go into this budget is the CIP as well as the ARPA funds that we have received. So those are things specifically that will come up as we talk about in the presentation here. But what I will do is just kind of go through the information. So this is actually a presentation that is on our website. It was recorded during the public session for anybody from the public to come to. So what we do every year is we as a staff, particularly as the city manager, there is a quote that I like to use in regards to kind of the overall budget. So the 2021 city quote that we use this year is budgeting isn't about limiting yourselves, it's about making the things that excite you possible. So that's something definitely as staff and also as the council, we have been reviewing throughout this budget. So obviously in the packet here, council members, you can see this information. There's the timeline that I just kind of went through, which talks about in October, we had multiple meetings. Also, a lot of our committees and commissions went through information as well. So particularly, there's our airport commission that looks at things as well as our water and sewer. And then we have the multiple meetings as a common council, which are all again open to the public, have all been published on our website and Facebook page for everybody to kind of review. And that kind of accumulates in what we have tonight, which is essentially the last meeting that we look at potentially options and scenarios and then ask the council to make a recommendation to adopt a budget so that we can get everything into the appropriate taxing entities and can get into the tax bills. So tonight, kind of what I could just want to go over is briefly some of the budget basics that we obviously do every year as a council and also as a staff. Look at the financial outlooks and considerations. Talk about the 2022 city budget initiatives that were really put into this budget. Talk about the increases and decreases that we had in regards to this budget. Look at our capital improvement plan and ARPA funding. Kind of give a brief 2022 to 2021 budget comparisons. You can kind of see where those numbers are. As well as then going into the 2021 current city tax impact and then the 2022 city tax proposed impact. So when we're talking about budget basics, something to remember obviously is the city has to create a budget where revenues equal expenditures. So on the revenue side of our budget, it's typically made up of components that are either borrowing. So that is debt that the city is issuing to cover long-term street projects or other long-term capital needs. There is state aid, which makes up quite a big portion of our budget as well. There's fees that we take in for some of the services that we provide as a city. And then obviously, there's the taxes, which is primarily made up of property taxes. Then on the expenditure side, there's obviously operating expenses, capital spending, debt payments and TID shortfalls that cover our expenditures. So with our budget basics, expenditures again are made up of kind of four key categories. There is the operating budget, which is the basic cost to run the day-to-day operations. Our capital improvement plan, which is one-time cost for large capital items. Some items are not predictable, others are not. We have it up here, so now I can kind of get to that. So as you can see here, we've got our expenditures, which is our CIP again is one-time cost for large capital items. Some items are predictable, others are not. We have our debt service, which is repayments on our loans, which are used to fund expensive, long-lasting capital projects. And then we have our TID districts, which is if revenues are less than expenses, the shortfalls may need to be covered. So again, just kind of talking about operating revenue, the general rule that we follow here is one-time revenue should not be used to balance the operating budget. There's really two ways to balance the budget. Either we have to increase revenues or we have to decrease expenses. So the personal equivalent you can think about with this is if you have a monthly pay, your monthly pay must cover your ongoing personal expenses. So utilities, food, clothes, et cetera. So using one-time revenue to balance your budget is like winning $500 in the lottery and then leasing a car with a monthly payment of $500. You can cover the expense for one month, but you will not be able to cover the expense next month once you win the lottery again. So debt service, so this particular area, the city borrows money to pay for lar- large, long-life capital projects such as streets. The lengths of the loan should not extend beyond the useful life of the item for which the funds were borrowed. And payments on loan represents the city's debt service. So there are particularly two caps that the city utilizes in regards to borrowing. One is a state requirement, whereas state statute, a city is only allowed to have debt up to 5% of their equalized value. The city of Platteville though has its own self-imposed policy where we have determined we wanted to go lower than that. So we only allow ourselves as a city to go 3.5% of equalized value. So again, the personal equivalent of debt service is when you take out a mortgage or a car loan, you make monthly payments until the debt is paid off. So what you can see here is the city borrowing notes. In 2021, we have an equalized value of $761,224,200. So our state borrowing limit is again 5% of that number, which comes to $38,61,210. As of right now, we have principal outstanding of $20,492,022. So we're at 53.8% of that 5% cap. So obviously, what that means is in the event there would be some type of catastrophic project that the city would have to do, we have funding available to essentially cover that. Again, to be more fiscally responsible, in line with some of our financial policies that we have, the city has a self-imposed 3.5%. So as you can see there, right now, we're at 76.9% of that cap. Again, we still have financial flexibility in the event we would need to do something major, whether that would be our wastewater treatment plant or some type of, you know, catastrophic repair that we would have to do. There is capacity to go and borrow for that and the city would be fiscally able to do that. So then we have CIP funding. So as you can see here, there are a bunch of different categories for funding sources. We can transfer from the general fund or extra reserves. So that's where in every year, if we have revenue that exceeds our expenditures, it can go into a reserve and essentially we can utilize those funds to cover future projects. We also have carryover again from previous years. We have short-term borrowing. This is not typical and is a sign of financial stress. So normally, we don't do that. We have base reserves, which may impact bond ratings. And typically, as we've talked about with capital improvement planning, it's usually long-term bonds. Where we're borrowing that for a long term in time, as we expect that whatever we're building, that asset is going to last longer than what we're paying off. So every year, we kind of analyze exactly what we need to do for capital improvement planning in the city. And again, due to budgetary concerns, the city has available $696,635 to spend on predictable CIP items. So these items include vehicle replacement, equipment replacement, building repairs, park improvements, sidewalk repairs. In addition to this, the city has borrowed from about $1 to $2 million for street reconstruction annually. Under the current long-range financial plan, the city has limited this borrowing to the amount being retired each year. So in 2021, the anticipated principal paid off for levy-supported financial borrowing is $1,275,000. So that is essentially the mark we have set that can be utilized in the 2022 budget for street projects. So then just to kind of summarize everything up, we have our TIF districts. Our TIF districts are obviously separate funds that have their own revenue and expenses. If revenue exceeds expenses, the amount goes into the fund balance for the district for future projects. The TIF district may close early and the created tax base isn't added to the rest of the city. If expenses exceed the revenues and there isn't funding balance available, either savings, then the general fund must cover the shortfall. So again, the personal equivalent to kind of think of a TIF district is imagine that you own several small businesses. If revenue exceeds expenses, you reinvest the money into the business. Down the road, you'll see the business and make a profit. If the business cannot pay their expenses, you, essentially us as taxpayers, as the owner, must pay from our personal accounts in order to cover those shortfalls. So some of the things that we obviously looked at in regards to kind of our financial outlook and considerations in this budget is one of the things we continue to see is obviously increases in operational expenses are expected to outpace net new construction. It is anticipated that TID six this year will not require levy support due to some of the projected growth we have seen. So one of the issues that obviously the city continues to deal with is net new construction this year was 0.43%. If you look at some of our municipal peers, we obviously are right online as in Lancaster, very similar. But if you look at some of the other municipalities that are about the same population size as us, they're definitely seeing more of an increase in that new construction. So as we've kind of talked about, in order to receive additional revenue, we as a city need to continue to grow. And that's residentially and also commercially. So that is something that we need to continue to promote from an economic development standpoint is more additional houses, more additional business that we get into the city is more revenue, which then decreases obviously the tax burden on everybody else because that is being spread across multiple entities. The other thing we wanted to do in this budget is sustain $696,635 of levy support for CIP as we just talked about. Again, just kind of summarizing with TID and citywide growth and our increases in state funding, this would help with all of the above and also then decrease the burden we have as taxpayers. One of the things we continue to need to look at in the future is city funding support for a new fire station will need to be monitored due to debt service and requirements. And one of the things obviously that we have seen is COVID-19 continues to impact our budget. I don't think there's any question about that. That is something that we have seen, which I'll kind of recap in certain areas that that continues to have an impact. We are hopeful, I think as everybody is, that as we continue to move forward with this pandemic, that we will start to see returns to some of those financial figures and some of those financial stables that we have seen in the past. But otherwise, that is something that obviously we continue to review how that impacts our city operations. So the next thing, just to kind of go over our budget drivers. So in every budget that we have, there's certain operating expenses that we look at every year. That salaries, benefits, any mandates that come down from the federal or state government or certain areas that require increases. Elections, so as you'll see some years, we can decrease our budget because of elections. We have a rather major election coming up, so obviously we're seeing increases. And contracts with COVID and with everything else, we have seen that happen to a lot of our areas specifically with contracts that everybody is seeing increases. Same thing with the revenue side where we can see increases and decreases is with state aids, hotel tax, and then revenue related to new developments. And then other things we have to consider obviously in our budget or debt service, TID support and expenditure restraint. So one of the things we really tried to do with this budget, as we've kind of seen with COVID-19, is you know, this budget is not requesting any new additional staff. It is not requesting any, you know, type of big, obviously new programs or procedures that we're looking to do. What we're trying to do is essentially invest in the employees that we have. One of the things that we obviously have noticed, and I think everybody has seen, you know, across the the nation, has been a worker issue and obviously with wages and staffs. And that is something that the city has known for many years and has been trying within budgets to, you know, proactively approach that. So one of the things we specifically looked at doing is again, and here we have the proposed 1% wage increase for all non-union city staff members. This has an impact to the budget of about $19,000. We have a proposed Wisconsin Professional Police Association wage increase of 4% to align with the compensation plan. By increasing the wage structure, this will assist us to remain competitive with other municipal organizations. Obviously, something that both myself and Chief McKinley have seen is when we have been recruiting to try to bring in new officers, it certainly has been a struggle. You know, we've run into an issue and I think, you know, as council member Cobb can attest to, we've gone through interview processes where we've had some pretty rock star candidates that we would like to hire. And unfortunately, because of the competitive wage market out there, we have not been able to bring those people into the city. So that is something that obviously we are trying to address to ensure that we continue to have, you know, very quality employees, but then also retain the current police force that we have. The other thing obviously we're looking at doing within this budget is a proposed step increase for all eligible employees in recognition of honoring the 2016 City of Platteville Compensation Plan. For some of you newer council members, you were here obviously when this was planned, was put into effect. But in 2016, there was a pretty deep dive and study done into reviewing kind of where our wages were. And at that time, we knew we were already behind the eight ball and kind of had created a plan to try to get us more competitive. Unfortunately, with kind of some budgetary issues and restraints, we have not been able to really honor that plan, which typically requires increases every year for certain positions. So this is something again that you're going to hear me kind of talking about or harping about in future discussions as well, is the need for retention and recruitment. We have to do that in order to stay competitive. Otherwise, it is going to have an impact. You know, my job is obviously as the city manager is to look down the road, to see how those impacts are. And the further we get away from that eight ball, the more we're going to see struggles. So that's particularly why that was put in here. Again, another thing we're looking at is the recreational seasonal staff wages. This is something that we definitely saw throughout the summer was with COVID-19 and with staff shortages, you know, we are now competing against pretty every major company that is out there that is now paying anywhere from $18 to $19, $20 an hour. So unfortunately, you know, we are never going to be able to, you know, one day eventually, if we have no problems financially, we'll be able to be there. But at this point in time, we do need to do some type of an incremental increase to try to cover those gaps so we can you know, continue to be competitive with those seasonal staff positions that we have. Again, adding dispatch shift differential pay of 50 cents per designated night hours to maintain competitive wages. And then one of the things we obviously looked at doing is increasing the pool admission fees to cover some of those increased costs that we're looking for in regards to the pool staff. Currently, the daily cost is $3, which is forecasted to bring in about $25,000 in revenue. There's an increase proposal to go to four, which essentially would be, you know, will be reviewed tonight, but then would be possibly proposed and approved by the council at the December meeting. So that's just something to consider. And obviously, when we look at a budget, there are things that we have had to do as a city to, you know, not fund or have to look at ways where we've had to delay projects or other options. Obviously, this is not an all-encompassing list, but when I talk, obviously with all of our department heads and staff, there is definitely a need for additional positions and additional areas. We understand though, that in order to try to continue to be fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars, that we can't all do that at once. So as you can see here, there were three items specifically that we, you know, looked at in this budget that we made the determination we could not include. That was a addition of a police department, part-time front desk assistant, looking at additional museum staffing to help out their operations. And obviously, an agenda creation software system that would improve kind of communications. These are all things that I don't think are going to go away. They're going to be continual conversations as we move forward in years here with the city. But then again, there are things that we understand as a staff and also as a council that, you know, eventually we do have to draw a line kind of in the sand in regards to where the budget stands and what, you know, is a increase that is palatable to everybody. So just overall, to kind of give you an understanding, within the budget to increase either 1% or decrease 1% is about $47,000. So as you can see here, these are some of the operating expense increases that occurred this year. Health insurance was obviously one of the biggest ones that we saw. That was 76,000. Now, I want to preface health insurance kind of is a roller coaster. So in previous years, we actually, like last year is a good example in the budget, we saw a 0% increase. The year before that, we actually saw a reduction. So these are things where, just like with anybody, when we have people retire or we have changes in positions, it fluctuates from year to year. So this is something that next year, very well could go back down, depending on what happens. Or, you know, as we're looking in this year, will be very much stabilized. Unfortunately, this year, because of some of the 0% and actually decreases, there is a contracted rate that they can increase. They went to the majority of that just because of that's what they've seen. So we're obviously dealing with that. Some of the other areas are salt contracts. Again, that continues to be a cost that goes up. So as we've talked about as a staff, we're going to be looking into all options and scenarios of how we can, you know, continue to keep that as cost-effective for our residents. Looking into other solutions, I know Brian has been a conversation that has come up, some other areas. So that's something we'll continue to kind of look at. Again, we have a gubernatorial election coming up, so that is kind of one of those unexpected. It's not unexpected, but it is an increase that occurs in some years. And then next year, potentially when we don't have that, we'll be able to drop the budget back down. So these are all things that we kind of look at as far as, and then you can see the proposed increases that are in there as well for staff. Some of the other areas we looked at in regards to operational expense decreases. Again, having kind of all of our department heads go through and sharpen their pencils, some of the areas that we looked at was with financial outlays. Those were software programs that we initiated this year. We're going to take a delay on that to obviously try to reduce the burden on all of us as taxpayers. So that's not occurring this year. There was some rent expense for the senior center that's being transitioned to OE gray. So that's a different kind of budgetary source that goes there. And then with street lighting, we continue to see benefits of moving to LED. So every year, we kind of change out our bulbs from what the previous version is to LED lights. We are hoping that we will continue to kind of see those savings, which then gets passed on to obviously all of us as taxpayers. Some of the other things we looked at from kind of an operational revenue standpoint. So there is OE gray that again is the revenue coming in is anticipated to be offset by the expenses. So that we anticipate or we are hopeful that will have very little impact on the tax rate for every, all of us. Again, there was a transfer from the CIP fund to cover vehicles that are now going through enterprise. So that is pretty much a wash there. We have the room tax. One of the big new things we looked at doing is with our fire agreements. That is a new area of revenue that is coming in with $32,000. The museum continues to work on grants. And one of the things that we definitely saw this year was we did see an increase in our municipal service payment. That is the kind of formula that comes from the state in regards to having a, not only a college here, but some other services. So particularly, that is nice that we are starting to see an increase where in years past, we've either seen a reduction or that number has been flat. We do anticipate that kind of as, you know, the city continues to move through COVID-19, that we are going to see some of the parking violations and court penalties increase because obviously people are going to be out more. One of the biggest impacts, I think we can directly relate to COVID-19 is interest. And to kind of give you a little bit of a understanding of where we were in 2019, we took in about $125,000 in revenue in interest. So that obviously is all of our financial, you know, accounts that we have sitting in banks or earning, you know, investments. Unfortunately, with COVID-19, we've seen the opposite. Interest rates are now at an all-time low, which is great if you're borrowing money. Not great if you have money in your savings account. So what we anticipate is obviously we are having to plan for the fact that we're seeing a pretty drastic reduction in interest. Our hope would be that as we continue to kind of evolve through COVID-19, that we'll start to see some of those historical numbers go back up and the money that we do have in kind of investments and then in some of our accounts, we'll start to see more revenue come in there, which again, then will allow us to decrease the burden that has to go on to taxpayers. And then the other thing we obviously saw again is transportation aid. And that's a direct result of every municipality having to kind of very much tighten their budgets and do less street projects, which then in turn recreates to an overall average of less money you're going to get back in your transportation aids. So overall, in the capital improvement plan, some of the things that we looked at was using multiple sources of funding this year. Obviously, with through the American Rescue Plan Act, it has given us the ability to kind of look at different ways that we can try to fund our capital improvement plan. So there is obviously the tax levy that we have for projects. There's intergovernmental revenues, which is either grants that we're getting through, you know, various departments as well as also ARPA funding. There's the general fund transfer. So we're recommending this year to use about $500,000 in reserves to be able to continue to fund a lot of our CIP projects. Then we do have some other sources of funding, which is either trust funds or carryover accounts or sales of equipment. So this is something that obviously the council spent a lot of time on, looking at an overall capital improvement plan and all the projects and different funding sources there. Very similar though, again, with trying to make sure we're being fiscally responsible, we did have to draw the line in the sand on some capital improvement projects. So there were some that we were not able to fund in full. So there were a couple of projects specifically in regards to city hall that are either going to be delayed or we're only going to do certain things on. Again, with the street in order to be fiscally responsible and maintain our kind of policy of not borrowing more than we are paying off. There's one street that we had to reduce a little bit. We do feel that we will be able to do that entire street. We're just going to have to make sure that, you know, we're responsible in those numbers coming in where we are forecasting. Again, there's a couple of other projects that we did not, you know, recommend moving forward, and that was the Pine Street parking lot as well as alleys. And again, that's just because again, with funding sources and having to make some tough decisions, we are pushing those projects off to 2023. So then as well, there's also water and sewer projects that both the Water and Sewer Commission and the Common Council reviewed as well. So with our water and sewer projects, they are funded primarily through either water revenue bonds or sewer revenue bonds. But also, there was the opportunity to use American Rescue Plan Act dollars to cover certain aspects of improvements made to our wastewater treatment plant in regards to improving the air quality in those buildings. And then also we utilize some cash reserve to cover those projects. But again, same thing here and looking at this particular department, there are projects that unfortunately, due to wanting again, to be very fiscally responsible of dollars, there's about a $500,000 project, which is the McGregor Plaza Sewer that is going to be pushed back and re-looked at in 2023 in regards to whether or not we can fund that project. So specifically talking about the American Rescue Plan Act, this was something that was done, I believe roughly in either June or July. We had a public hearing where the council reviewed options and scenarios that could be utilized to fund specific projects. And these are some of them that came out of there. So there is a city hall phase renovation that potentially is going to be technology upgrades to not only this particular room, but other areas within city hall. That will require some IT upgrades to be done as well as looking at improving our already existing camera system and expanding that to certain areas. We have a main street culvert that we're going to be looking at doing. The round tree branch stabilization would be funded through these dollars. Potentially the addition of a second street sidewalk, looking at some areas as we talked about with the water and sewer and then the museum as well. There were also a couple of other areas, looking at the housing authority having a grant that can be utilized for low-income housing. Our stormwater pond projects, we have a couple of projects that potentially would be utilized for that. Putting some money aside for housing developer incentives to help spur again development, which then would decrease the overall tax burden. Doing an HVAC study so we can identify certain buildings within the city that need to be improved. And then again, having some funding available for broadband initiatives and expanding broadband throughout the city. So again, this just kind of shows you in a pie chart format, kind of some comparisons between 2021 and 2023. And just kind of toggling back and forth, you can see we are very similar from year to year. So in 2021, the majority of our total governmental expenses is made up of our general fund, which is 31%. And then our capital projects, which are obviously 24%, that's the gray that you can see here on the chart. And then as well as kind of the light blue is the capital fund. So going to 2022, as you can see, there really is not a lot of difference. The general fund is now 33% compared to 31%. So that has gone up a little bit. But otherwise, again, our three main areas of overall governmental expenses continues to be the general fund, which again, is the majority of our departments, police, fire, administration, streets, and then our capital projects. So what this chart kind of shows you is overall the general fund revenues. So in 2021, the majority of the blue there is 47% is made up of intergovernmental revenues and charges. So again, that is the money we directly receive from the state. So there is about almost over $2 million that we receive in state aid and assistance. So that is very, you know, we continue as a city to be very dependent on ensuring that we get those aids. And when we don't, that has a drastic impact because then it requires us to look at either cutting services or shifting that burden into the property tax, which is the green. Where as you can see in 2021, it was 47% and 34. And then we do have a variety of other ones, which is miscellaneous charges, public charges for services, and then assessments, permits and fines. So as you can see here in 2022, it's going a little bit, the intergovernmental revenues and charges is going down to 46%, which then obviously is shifting the burden 35% now to the property tax. So overall, what this shows everybody is where the city kind of stands out in regards to the assessed tax rate from 2016 to 2021. So as you can see here, what these are, these are So as you can see here, what these are, these are municipal peers that we have utilized in our compensation study as well as also their populations are very similar to us. You can see we have a couple of River Falls, Whitewater are specifically UW universities. So that's very similar to us as we have UW Platteville. And then again, some of these other municipalities are, you know, very similar in size. So what you can see is this is has been the assessed rate tax comparison. We are pretty much directly in the middle. We are not the lowest at Whitewater. We certainly are not the highest at Baraboo, which is $11.55 in 2021. This just kind of again, shows you guys a comparison of where we have been the last kind of six years. And as you can see right again, we are smack dab in the middle. We are not the highest, we're not the lowest. We're kind of right where we, you know, are in regards to being in the middle. Same thing here. This is another graph. We are the yellow line here on this chart. As you can see, again, we're right in the middle of all of these different entities in regards to where our tax rate is. So kind of looking at our 2022 city tax proposed impact, the general fund is looking to go up 6%. Our taxi bus fund is looking to go up 100% and primarily that's because in 2021, we received a lot of federal funding and grants to cover that. So we were able to not have to levy for that. With those changes, we've had to go back to levying for that service. Our debt service fund is going up a little bit, 4.4%. And then our capital improvement fund is actually decreasing. So as you can see, we are using more reserves this year to cover the actual capital improvement fund. So that's why you're seeing a decrease. So overall, from the levy, we're looking at about 2.7% being the total increase that is needing to fund the 2022 budget. So what does that mean overall for taxpayers? Essentially, right now we are at 2021, we're at $8.02 per $100,000 of assessed value. What is being proposed tonight is to go to $8.27. So that would be an increase of 25 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. So what that would mean is an owner of a $150,000 home would pay $1,240.50 in city property taxes. This would be up $37.50 over the year or $3.13 per month from 2021. What this graph kind of shows you here is the overall particular kind of history of where we have been in regards to assess tax rate. So as you can see, we are seeing a little bit of an increase, but overall historically, we are nowhere near the numbers we saw as in 2024 where we were $13.20 per $100,000 of assessed value. So this is something that again, we continue to see as we start to come out of, you know, hopefully COVID-19 and start to see some of those revenue sources go back. We are hopeful that we will continue to see or have the ability to decrease that number. Also as well with growth, we are hopeful that by seeing, you know, we are aware of next year with all some new homes being developed as well as businesses, that that will be able to allow us to look at that tax rate. So what this kind of shows you is yes, overall, we are looking at a tax rate increase. But if you look at historically for the last five years within the city, in 2019, we actually saw a reduction in our taxes across the board, depending on homes. So what this is, is this is a graph showing you $150,000 home, a $200,000 home, 250, 300,000 and 350,000. So overall, over the last, you know, five years, the overall impact to city taxes for a home of $150,000 has actually been $21. So in five years, the taxes have gone up $21 on a home that's been 150,000. It's been 28 for a home that's 235 for 250, 300,000 is 42 and 350,000 is 49. So as you can see here, the cost per month that is proposed is an increase of $3.13 for a home that's 150,000. And then it increases to four, five, six and seven, depending on the size. So that is pretty much everything you have seen over the last couple of months and over the presentation. As we've talked about as staff, we obviously have been able to reduce that number. Originally we were higher. So that's something that we're actually went in and sharpened our pencils. But what you have in front of you now is essentially the resolution to establish the budget for 2022. So we will answer, I guess, any questions or comments that you might have.
We're going to consider that both the staff presentation and the applicant presentation. Does anyone have any quick questions of Adam or Nicola? Otherwise I'm going to go to the rest of the public hearing. Because I would take public statements in favor. And I have had no one register. I would take public statements against. And again, I've had nobody register and public statements in general. So we would be to the council discussion portion of the public hearing. So is there anybody who has a discussion item?
I guess I would like to make some comments. While I, you know, the bottom line is, is an increase. I want to acknowledge the hard work that city staff did. And I know as, as a member of the council, I think it's important for the public to know that we had a lot of input and as council representatives, we had a lot of opportunity to ask questions. I think the, the staff did an excellent job in detailing our questions and giving us repeated information. So I am overall very much satisfied with the end result that we have.
Any other comments? I'd echo Kathy, this is a long process. I mean, we'll, we'll almost get this passed. They'll get the tax bills out, they'll collect taxes and guess what? They'll start on next year's budget. So I think all in all, this is a process that is ongoing.
It is.
Regardless of the day, the time, the month, there's always things that need to be looked at. And particularly now, as we have grant applications out, as there's all this money that has been allocated for infrastructure and other projects that we have staff working, I think way long hours, just trying to figure out if we're eligible for some of that. So.
Yeah. And I think that's overall our hope is that by applying for some of these grants, you know, particularly we have items that we are saying are being funded by, you know, capital improvement levy or by other sources. If we are, you know, lucky enough to get some of those grants, that potentially is money then that that's a conversation then for us as a city is how do we want to utilize, you know, we had anticipated it was going here, but now we have this. So either that can be used as reserves, which then in the long run decreases, you know, the tax burden for future years, which is what we're hopeful for. That we then can use that to offset some, either some of the increases we're seeing to try to keep the tax rate flat. Or hopefully as all of us as taxpayers can see a reduction from the city side of things, that's the end goal that we always try to achieve.
Okay. Any other discussion items? Otherwise there are two resolutions that go along with this public hearing. One resolution is 2128 appropriating the necessary funds for the operation and administration of the city of Platteville for the year 2022. And the other one is resolution 2129 authorizing the salaries and rates of pay of the officers and person and permanent employees, including union personnel. I believe the city managers increase is included in the book for the year 2022. So those would be the two resolutions we're looking at in this public hearing. If there's no other discussion, I would seek a motion then to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Jason to close the public hearing. Candace will vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot? Motion carries. Okay, I'm now seeking action on the two resolutions. We'll start with resolution 2128 appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the city during this upcoming year. Do I hear a motion, Ken?
Move to adopt resolutions 2128 appropriating the necessary funds for the operation administration or city of Platteville for the year 2022 in the amount of 70,711,246 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Eileen to adopt resolution 2128. Candace will vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the second of the resolutions then is 2129. If I can get back to my agenda, this is allocating, authorizing salaries and rates of pay for officers and permanent employees excluding union personnel for the upcoming year. Do I hear a motion on this? Trying to see the exact number and I'm not finding it. So, okay. So your, your vote, you're making a motion to approve resolution 2129. There is no total on it. This is listed as salary ranges for various employee. What do you call them? Group, not groups.
Positions.
Positions.
So the resolution would be to authorize the salaries and rates of pay as presented for the year 2022.
Are you good with that, Eileen? Okay, so we have a motion.
A second.
By Eileen and a second by Kathy to approve this resolution. Candace will vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian? Nichols?
Cop? Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. And again, thank you to the staff and all council members also for their work on the 2022 budget.
Yeah, I just want to echo again to the staff and also to all of you as council members. We've had some long meetings and some long nights. And obviously I think it still amazes me that all of you as council members do this really out of the goodness of hearts and have no really compensation for what you do. So again, I think that's just kudos to you, you know, looking out for the taxpayers as well. Nobody likes to do an increase. I know we don't like that, but you know, the reality is we are continuing to provide the services we can to our residents and continuing to move this city in a positive direction. So kudos again to you and kudos again to everybody from a staff standpoint that worked on this. So.
Okay, let's move on then to our second public hearing tonight. This is on resolution 21-30. It's the street discontinuance. And it is for Uber Socks Drive. And this comes to us via QuickTrip and Kunis Auto Group. So Joe?
Yes, those two folks have represented here this, this evening, but they're looking at redeveloping some of the lots adjacent to Uber Socks Drive. QuickTrip is interested in purchasing the, the mobile station on the corner of Vision Drive and Business 151. They like to redevelop that, basically tear that building and canopy down, redevelop it with a new generation, QuickTrip store, new canopy fueling station. And then across from the current Uber Socks Drive across the street to the south, they develop a car wash facility and canopies and fueling station for diesel vehicles, primarily larger vehicles. And then Kunis dealership is looking at doing some reconfiguration of their entrance driveways, parking lots, both for visitors, employees and obviously the display vehicles. So to really give them some more flexibility, some more options on how they undertake that redevelopment. They've requested the city to discontinue Uber Socks Drive as a public street. So if that's approved, it would basically be transferred to a private driveway that would be owned by the, the two groups. There'd be shared access easements in place. There'd be shared maintenance agreements in place between the two entities as far as future maintenance, ongoing maintenance as well as reconstruction activities as needed. There's a provision in state statute that basically says any utilities that are present above ground or underground. Basically there's automatically an easement provided for the maintenance of those or access to those. So any cities you, utilities are automatically covered as far as our ability to get to those and maintain those. Really the only concern, and it's kind of a minor concern, I guess, but the concern that staff had with this ideas, you know, going forward in the future at some point, if that it's specifically the end of the cul-de-sac, the turnaround area, if that was to be reconfigured to a point where it was no longer large enough to allow for emergency vehicles, fire trucks in particular to turn around. We had some concern about their ability to get in, get back out. So we did meet with the folks from the auto dealership, talked about it and basically we're confident that the, the ability to get out will be accommodated through fire lanes and access drives on the property itself, if that ever becomes necessary. So what we're proposing is to have a memorandum of agreement that really specifies that hey, these codes are present. They apply to this property as far as access fire lanes and so forth. And so that way, everybody's on the same page going into it at the beginning that these codes are applicable to this project and in their future projects for that dealership so that they have to keep that in mind. So they're doing their plans for that redevelopment. So staff is confident with that in place that that will not be an issue in the future with access. So given that, we would recommend approval of the discontinuance of Uber Socks Drive subject to that memorandum of agreement. Plan commission did consider this item and also recommended approval. Any questions?
Any questions? Otherwise I know the applicants are here. So I don't know, Dex and Derek, if you want to come up and say anything or at least identify yourselves. You don't have to say anything, but at least.
I'm Derek Fur with Kunis Auto Group. I'm the regional director for Madison to Dubuque region. Yeah, like Joe said, our primary concern when we do decide to develop anything is going to be with the emergency services vehicles in mind. And I did meet with them out there and this should chew it all. Matter of fact, I think we're going to actually gain some more space by doing this. So it's, it's been a great partnership thus far with QuickTrip and we're looking to develop that area. I'll just make it a nicer, you know, place for everyone.
Any questions of Derek? And you're good? Okay. The next item on a public hearing then are public statements in favor. Again, I've had no one register in favor. I've had no one register against. I've had no one register in general. So now we'll go to any council discussion that remains. Okay, then I would seek a motion to close the public hearing. All right, motion by Isaac, second by Ken to close the public hearing. Candace will vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item then would be to seek a motion on resolution 21-30.
All right, big motion to approve the resolution, excuse me, resolution 21-30, the discontinuance of Uber Socks Drive, subject to the memorandum of an agreement between Kunis and the city regarding the emergency vehicle access to the property.
Well, I had three seconds, but I'm going to take Lynn as the second this time. So we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Lynn to approve resolution 2130. Candace will vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot? Motion carries. Okay, the third of our public hearings tonight then is on a conditional use permit, resolution 2131. This is for a QuickTrip car wash. Joe?
Yeah. So as part of the redevelopment of that site, QuickTrip is interested in constructing a car wash. As I mentioned, it'd be on the basically south of the existing mobile station on that, what is now vacant property. Under our zoning ordinance in the B3 district, car washes are listed as a conditional use permit. And I think that that's for a couple of reasons. One is, you know, due to the nature of that, that use, the traffic, particularly noise from the blowers and so forth. You want to make sure that it's not proposed for a location that's really going to have a negative impact on the, the neighborhood, it's running properties. Given that location is commercial, there's actually a car wash authority on the auto dealership site. There's no residential nearby, so I don't see that as being an issue. The other thing we, we always want to look at with car washes is, you know, certain times of the year, certain days, there's a tendency for vehicles to back up as they're waiting to use the car wash. So we want to make sure there's enough area on site that they have the ability to stack on site without creating problems in the street as far as traffic impact. So. as proposed, it appears there, there definitely room to do that without creating an issue. And with that Uber Socks Drive obviously being discontinued at some point, it's going to be a long ways before it impacts a public street. So we're confident that as the layout is proposed, would, would not create an issue for the traffic. So one thing that question that came up, I think at the Plankhurst meeting or meeting before was the access. So the car wash would be accessed from the north. So if you're getting gas at the QuickTrip station itself, you'd leave from there, then you can drive directly into the car wash from that direction, exit to the south and then back out onto Vision Drive. So that would be the, the flow of traffic for the car wash. And I didn't mention it before, but as far as the, the diesel fueling, the trucks would primarily come in off of Vision Drive. There's a driveway to the south of the car wash where they would enter there, then fuel up and then enter, exit towards the north and then back out onto Vision Drive. So it works out well, I think, because those two vehicle paths, so to speak, the, the vehicles using the car wash and the vehicles feeling on the diesel site would not cross paths. They're kind of in separate direction flow. So I think that would work very well from a traffic standpoint. So staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit for the car wash. Again, the commission considered this item and also recommended approval. Any questions?
Any questions of Joe?
I have one question, and this is what is the situation as far as efficiency of the car wash? Is the water one-time use?
Okay, Dex.
Dex Conley, real estate manager, QuickTrip, La Crosse, Wisconsin. We do recycle a certain percentage. I think it's up to 20, 25% of water is recycled through there. So it's not, it's not 100% recycled. There is a lot of one-time use.
Thank you.
Dex, do you have anything else you want to say? Any questions of?
And I think Joe covered that pretty well with, you know, coming from the north, exiting from the south. You'll have, you'll have your vacuums there on the south. And then again, trucks will enter from Vision Drive on that south end, face north. After feeling pull ahead, there's room to pull ahead, stay off of Uber Socks Drive and be able to walk across the street and come in and get food or drinks or pay for their fuel. So it's not expecting semis. We may see some semi-traffic there. It's more designed for your, your diesel trucks pulling boats, pulling large trailers, you know, box trucks, as we see a lot more delivery of UPS, FedEx, so on and so forth. Thank you for that, Joe.
Okay, so we've had the staff presentation, the applicant statement. Again, I've had nobody register public statement in favor. I've had no registration of a public statement against, nor have I had anybody register to make a public statement in general. Is there any additional council discussion? If there's no additional council discussion, then I would seek a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion by Isaac and a second by Ken to close the public hearing. Candace will vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols? Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot? Motion carries. And I'm looking for a motion on resolution 21-31, a conditional use permit to authorize a QuickTrip car wash.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to adopt resolution 2131 made by Jason, seconded by Eileen. Candace will vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols? Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot? Motion carries. Okay, that concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. And gentlemen, you're of course welcome to stay. I don't think you have anything else on the agenda, do they? Oh, they do have.
Dex does. Derek has to stick.
Oh, you guys have to stick around. Well, then you just have to stick around. Okay. Next item on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you would prefer separate discussion or action. We have the council minutes from November 9th. It's regular meeting. We have the payment of bills. We have appointments to boards and commissions. And tonight I have several. First to the tide committee, Royal Palmer. This is a replacement of somebody who can't serve anymore.
Correct, correct. Yes, it's the Southwest Rainbow Alliance representative. So.
Okay, to the Board of Appeals Zoning, I have two appointments, Jean Weber and Dana Niehaus. To the Historic Preservation Commission, replacing Bill Kramer, who had to resign due to his health. I have Lori Loffenberg. And to the Water and Sewer Commission for a partial term ending October 1st, 2025, I have Jim Schneller. All right, moving on licenses, we have temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages and wine. This went to the Roundtree Gallery for Sunday, November 28th, Artist Sunday. We have another temporary Class B to serve fermented beverages and wines at Roundtree Gallery. Oh, just a minute. That was a pop forward. This one would be for the teeny, tiny, bold artist reception on December 3rd. We have an another temporary Class B license to serve fermented malt beverages issued to the Mount Platteau Main Street Program for the just Wednesday, December 8th, December monthly mingle. We have one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol in your packet. Taxi driver license, a taxi vehicle license. We have a street closing permit for four parking spots across from City Hall on Bonson Street for a live nativity scene for Friday and Saturday, December 17 and 18 from four to eight. And we have the termination of the agreement with Scannell Properties, number 498 LLC. What do I, what is your pleasure? I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as presented. We'll vote, Candace? I didn't catch who seconded. That was Eileen and Ken. Thank you. Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols? Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
No.
Parrot? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, citizens' comments, observations and petitions, if any. As we start this, I want to call out and give special recognition. A partner organization of ours is the Platteau Area Industrial Development Corporation. And our executive director of that corporation, Eila Cockiday, has taken a new job. And so I do want to call out and a special thank you to Eila for her years of service to the city and to this group. Kathy, Kathy Cop, who serves on our police and fire commission, has an announcement she wants to make.
Um, I would, as a representative of the police and fire commission, I would like to ask Doug, our chief of police, to talk briefly about the phenomenal acknowledgement that the department just received with a very special accreditation. And I think it's very important that the public understands the importance and significance of that accreditation.
Thank you. We're very proud of this honor. It's something that we achieved through the teamwork of everybody at the PD. And what it is essentially is accreditation through the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group, which certifies that all of our practices, policies and procedures are in line with the best practices in the field of law enforcement. So that it's a very thought-after status. Typically, it's reserved for a little bigger agencies. And as such, only about 7% of the law enforcement entities in the state of Wisconsin can claim full accreditation status. So again, something that we undertook voluntarily about three years ago. It's not something, something easily achieved, but like most things are difficult. It's something we very much value and again, feel that it is hence the professionalism of our staff and allow us to deliver quality service to the city of Platteau. So thank you for the opportunity to expand on that.
Congratulations, Doug, and thank you to you and your team. Good job.
Thank you.
Applause is hardly enough, but we'll at least give applause.
We'll take it.
Any other citizens' comments, observations or petitions? And we'll move on to the reports. There were four in your packet. Museum board, Eileen, anything to add?
I would just add that everyone should go to the museum website and look at the information about the Horsestrong carriage rides, which will be happening in December. It's a great lot of fun. So if you haven't done it before, check it out.
Okay, community safe routes, Jason?
Nothing to add.
Parks, forestry and recreation, Jason?
Just that because the approval for the location for the park, that group is starting to do all their fundraising. And so hopefully that comes to fruition here in the next year.
Historic Preservation Commission, Ken?
Draw your attention to the minutes, October 21st. Those were approved on the 16th, and those minutes will come up later in a discussion as far as appeal from the applicants for 130 Market Street later in the, in the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, that's, that concludes the reports. We'll move now to the action items on the agenda. The first one is a certified survey map from QuickTrip and Kunis Auto Group. Joe?
Yeah, thank you. So as part of that redevelopment of that area, again, towards that, the applicants have submitted a request for a certified survey map to reconfigure those lots. So since the Uber Socks Drive was officially discontinued earlier, part of the purpose of the CSM would be to basically take the, the land that was part of that street right away, transfer it to the adjacent lots. And then in addition to that, currently there's four parcels of four lots that have frontage onto that street. So the the CSM would reconfigure that too. So there would be two lots. So it'd be a reduction from four to two. And then, like I said, reconfigure the former right of way into those slots. So obviously from a zoning subdivision standpoint, you know, we look at lot size, lot frontage. The lots are getting larger than what they were before. So there's no issue with minimum lot size. Typically, the, the, the main issue that we look at is access as well. We talked about the access issue that was addressed through the memorandum of agreement and agree. So I think that part is still taken care of. One thing I, I didn't mention previously, but there is also a shared access driveway that will be added as part of that QuickTrip redevelopment on the far south side of that property, which will also provide access back to the, eventually back to the auto group property. So access to that property is still taken into consideration. We'll, we'll work without any issues. So it, it seems like all the, the typical issues that we look at when in a case like this have all been addressed. So staff would recommend approval subject to the CSM being reported with the Register of Deeds and a copy provided to the city. And the plant commission also considered this item and recommended approval. Any questions?
Okay, any questions of Joe? Any questions at all? Derek and Dex are here if we need them, or if anybody has a question. Otherwise, if there is no question on this certified survey map request, do I hear a motion?
All right, make a motion to approve the proposed certified survey map with the following conditions. A, the CSM should be recorded with a grant county register deeds and a copy should be provided to the city. And then B, the approval of a contingent on the council discontinue Uber Socks Drive.
We have already.
Correct.
All right. So we really, so do we need that second part of this as a motion, Joe?
I, I don't think it's necessary at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, it was in there in case you voted to not approve that discontinuance. Obviously, they'd have to redo their CSM.
Okay.
I changed my motion to drop off the even.
Okay with that, Kathy? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the certified sur- certified survey map with the condition that it be recorded with the Grant County Register of Deeds and a copy provided to the city. Candace will vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols? Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot? Motion carries. Okay. Then now we will move along to the appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission denial for the 130 Market Street certificate of appropriateness regarding a sign for the 50/50 business. Joe?
Correct. Yeah. So the, the owners of the 50/50 business, 130 Market Street, did submit a request for approval of signage for that business. There was signage at the back of the property along Furnace Street that was approved. But there was also a sign on the front of the, the building facing Market Street, specifically on the front porch that was denied by the commission. So the owners have requested, basically they're appealing that decision to the council, which is a provision that is allowed by our ordinance. So I did include some photos of, of the front of that building. So there's two signs that are visible. The larger one is, was approved years ago. It's the, the smaller circular sign with the red detailing on the left side of that porch is the, the sign in question. So that was denied by the, the commission. And as, as the, the minutes, basically it went to the, the commission twice, once in September 21st, they tabled it for additional information. Then on October 21st for action, it was denied on a three to two vote. And as Ken mentioned, I, I did include the, the minutes in the packet was the minutes from the 21st that were approved and the well, they're both 21st, September meeting and the October meeting. I had the draft minutes. When I sent the approved minutes to collect, she included in the packet. I forgot to tell her to also put it in under this item. So the approved minutes from that meeting are also in the report section, or in the discussion at the commission meeting. From a staff standpoint, we, we would recommend approval of the conditional, the certificate of appropriateness for that sign. You know, the sign itself, I think is, is, it's not overly large. It is an attractive sign. It's basically using their logo that it shows up on the other signage that was approved. You know, the brackets, wrought iron bracket, which is a, a style that's very appropriate for an, an older building. The location is not blocking or destroying any architectural characteristic or feature of the building, which is primary consideration for the location of signs in the historic district for the building signs. One item that was discussed at the commission level as far as a reason for denial was because of the access to that business is actually off of Furnace Street. The, you have to enter from the back of the building to get to that. So they get to have a, a sign on this side of the building. But it was also discussed at that meeting that because there's no parking on Furnace Street itself, that a lot of the clients would choose to park, you know, along the park where there's better parking. And it's visible in one of those pictures, but there's actually a sidewalk. It's a private sidewalk between those buildings that leads from the front of the property to the back of the property. So you can actually park along Smith Park and walk along the, the building to get to the back. And it, that sidewalk is right next to that column where this sign is attached. So you know, the commission felt that that location was not appropriate for the sign. And personally, I think that is the most obvious location is to have it right next to, you know, that walkway. And it's obviously not centered on the property. So it's not directing them to the front entrance and hinting that it's around the back. So I think the sign itself is appropriate. The location is appropriate. So staff would recommend approval of that sign. Any questions?
Okay, any questions of Joe? Okay, any comments?
Okay, I have a question. I'm sorry. We're talking about the sign, the attitude is everything sign, correct?
Correct. The one with the red, uh, circle.
So I'm, I'm, I was stuck in reading this early and I figured out, wait till we got to this part. So it was approved at one time.
It was not approved.
It was not approved.
The, the, I, I just mentioned that if you look at the, the first picture, it has two signs, the barb.
Right, right.
That was approved years ago. So that's not a matter of this one.
Right.
There, there is other signage that was submitted for approval at the same time at the back of the building.
Okay.
So that part was approved.
Okay.
Those signs were approved. It's just this specific sign that was not approved. So requesting the appeal to allow that sign to remain.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good. And I'm, I get it.
Okay, Ken?
Okay, I'm going back to the approved minutes that I mentioned about before. And just a couple of things from that. The sign, you cannot get to 50/50 by going, 50/50 by going through the building. So you have to go around to get to the back to get to 50/50. As far as going between buildings there, I've looked at that and the space going between buildings. This is not sufficient as far as going through there. There's stuff in the way there so that between the buildings is not appropriate way to get to the back. My suggestion is that if you're going to get to the back, you need to follow the sidewalks along those parking streets. There, there are two next to the houses there. So either you go, when you look at 130 Market, either go to the left or go to the right. So that the use of this sign to direct people, it's not useful as far as where to go. So you're going to go up the stairs to try to get into 50/50? That's not appropriate. That's not the, the way to go. And we, we denied the sign. That's one of the reasons. We also suggested an option that we, would be to move the sign and put it in a location by the house, 130 Market, so that you can direct the people to the back of the building. Right now, the sign says nothing as far as going to the back. If you want to put up the sign, have a, and underneath that sign have a sign with an arrow that says, go that particular direction to the left and use the walkway, that'd be fine. Or else you can put up a sign that says, go to the right and use the sidewalk to get to the back. So it's, um, it's a setup that is, it's not appropriate. It's confusing. And so I do not favor approving this. We would approve it if it were standing out by itself and not on the porch. Because on the porch, it doesn't direct you in particular as to where to go.
I have a question.
Jason?
Um, for Joe, has the business owner said that they've run into confusion of people walking through the front of the building to get to the cocktail lounge? Has that been a problem in terms of traffic flow?
Not that I'm aware of. I've never had a conversation with the owners.
Talking about between buildings?
No, I'm just wondering if the business owner has had trouble with people coming in through the front to access the cocktail lounge?
Up, no, going up, up to the porch, on the porch.
Yes.
But hasn't been mentioned. But it had to, supposedly the area for the 50/50 is on the second floor. Or to the first floor, which is another use.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I guess my comment would be, so I'm looking at the, you know, the, this is being denied by the historic preservation. Going through the comments here, and it doesn't look like it was denied due to the fact that it's changed in the building and all, just because they didn't like the location of the sign. You know, reflecting some of what Joe's comments were, you know, there is no parking other than one, basically one stall in the back. And it's simply for the, the owners and employee. So you see this quite common in other areas where the entrance to a business is on the back. In order for that business to attract people to it, they do put another sign on the front of a building stating that is, you know, somewhere in that building or on that property. You know, I made a comment as well the last time. And, you know, it looks like, again, you know, their area where everybody that's on the preservation committee here doesn't own a building or business on Main Street or in that area. So I think the people that have owned this building probably have better knowledge how to run their business and attract their customers with the preservation. I would be in favor of the approval of the sign as it presented it.
So you would be in favor of?
Approving the appeal.
Denial, approving the denial. Okay, are you making a motion, Isaac?
Yes, I will. I'm making a motion to approve the requested sign for the 50/50 business on the front porch of the building at 130 Market Street.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the requested sign for the 50/50 business on the front porch of the building at 130 Market Street. This would in fact overturn the denial of the Historic Preservation Commission in case you need that further explanation. Okay, Candace will vote.
Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Nichols?
Yeah.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I believe that that, uh, that those are the two agenda action items that we had for tonight. So now we'll move on to our information discussion items. The first of which is shared ride taxi fare increase. And Howard's not here, so I guess Adam is pinch hitting.
That is correct. Howard is getting started early on Gobble Day, so I'm going to pinch hit for him here. So as the staff note indicates, the city of Platteville has a shared ride taxi system and a fixed route bus system. In the eyes of the State Department of Transportation, we have a fixed route bus system and an ADA paratransit component that also serves as a shared ride system. Some history for everybody in the room and kind of on the Zoom call here is the shared ride taxi system was established in the 1980s. It was operated by a local family until the early 2000s, when there was a competitive selection process under the Department of Transportation procedures. The contract went to Top Hat Incorporated. Then in a subsequent request for proposals, the contract went to Run and Incorporated of Verocra and has been held by them ever since. The current contract will be in its final extension year for 2022. Under the Department of Transportation rules, we will need to do the RFP process, which is request for proposals in summer of 2022 for a new contract to begin January 1st of 2023. Per the contract, the city has a range of hours of service and the contractor charges a price per hour. For the last few years, the contract hours have been $13,500 for the year. Per the contract, the price went up by the Consumer Price Index as of August, 5.3% to $32.88 per hour for $443,880. The bus system was started by the University of Wisconsin-Platteville in 2013 in response to the development of round tree commons and the desire to have alternate transportation for students so they could reduce the need for off-street parking. The city and UW-Platteville discussed the situation with the DOT and determined that the system might be better if combined. The Department of Transportation hired Southwest Wisconsin Regional Planning to conduct the study. The result was that if the system was combined under a single local administrator, the system would be eligible for federal and state grants. This combined system allowed the university to decrease their subsidy, and it also allowed the city to expand the taxi service hours and add bus routes for the city outside of UW-Platteville at the same local subsidy cost. The city took over the system in May of 2015. Per the contract, the city has a range of hours of service and the contractor charges a price per hour. For the coming year, the contracted hours has been estimated at 5,900 for hours for the year. Per the contract, the price went up by the CPI as of August, 5.3% to $38.14 per hour for $225,026. As part of the agreement to combine the system, the city created the Platteville Public Transportation Committee, which is composed of 10 members, five each from the city and five from UW-Platteville. This is an advisory committee to look at bus routes, bus and taxi fares, and other options to improve public transportation for both the city and UW-Platteville. The Director of Public Works has been the staff member working with the transportation system for over 25 years. So from the above, we have budgeted expenses in 2022 of $443,880 for the taxi service and $225,026 for the bus, and an additional small amount of staff time to prepare the grant application and reports, printing of bus passes, et cetera, for approximately $670,000 total. Revenue are from five different sources. There's federal grants, state grants, fare revenues, UW-Platteville's local subsidy, and the city's local subsidy. Fare revenue pre-COVID were around $110,000 per year. Based on the Department of Transportation formula, the deficit is expenses, which is 670,000, less the fare revenues, which is 110,000, or the deficit is 560,000. The combined federal and state grants vary slightly, but are about 55% of the expense for $368,500. This leaves a deficit of 191,500. Per the agreements between the University of Wisconsin-Platteville and the city, UW-Platteville has provided 78.6% of the local subsidy, which is about 150,000, and the city has applied the remaining 21.4, which has been about $40,981, plus an administration fee of $5,000 annually to cover the staff costs. The practical effect was that UW-Platteville has paid 155,000 and the city approximately 36,500 over the last few years, pre-COVID. If you run the calculation based on separate systems, UW-Platteville has been paying for all of the deficit for the bus, plus about $20,000 of the deficit of the taxi. UW-Platteville collects its share of the local subsidies through student fees. Due to declining enrollment, these fee revenues have been declining. For 2022, UW-Platteville can only commit to $125,000. So this leaves a deficit of about $66,500. There have been three ways to deal with this that have been talked about. One is to reduce the hours for the bus, the taxi, or both to reduce expenses. This approach will also reduce the federal and state grant revenue. The second way is to increase the city subsidy from general tax revenue. Or the third way is to increase fare revenues. Fares for the taxis were last increased by 50 cents as of January 1st, 2022. It has been 10 years. Oh, I'm sorry. Whoop, good point, 2012. It has been 10 years since the last increase. The Public Transportation Committee has conducted surveys of riders. There was a limited response by taxi riders, but by an overwhelming margin, the ones who responded said that a 25 cent increase was an acceptable increase. The Transportation Committee still wishes to encourage bus usage. So the committee recommends that the bus fares to remain the same. At the November 18th, 2020 meeting, the committee recommended a fair increase of 25 cents on January 1st, 2022, and another 25 cent increase in 2023. For adults, it would go from $2.75 to $3 per ride. For those over 65, under 18 or disabled, the fares would go from $2.50 to $2.75 per ride. The committee also recommends the mileage charge for rides outside the city be increased by $1 per mile from $2 to $3. Since this is a choice, it is expected that ridership will decrease, but overall revenues will increase. We saw this happen in 2012. There was a 23% decrease in riders from 2011 to 2012, but a net increase in revenue of 10%. By 2013, we were down 3.6% in rides from 2011, but up 38% in revenues. So vehicles, the taxi system has four vehicles, three as normal operating vehicles and one as a spare when one of the other three are being serviced. All are owned by the city with the Department of Transportation as the lien holder. These were paid for with 80% funding from the state federal government and 20% by the city. The bus system has three vehicles. As of Thursday morning, November 18th, 2021, we have two of the three owned by the city with the DOT as the lien holder. They were paid with 80% funding by the state and federal government and 20% by UW-Platteville. The third vehicle is owned by Stratton Bus Incorporated. Any change in the current service must be done after holding a public hearing. Increase in fares is one of the changes that requires a public hearing. So in regards to the budget and fiscal impact, increasing taxi fares by 25 cent is expected to cover most of the shortfall of UWP's subsidy reduction and the increasing cost to operate the combined system. So the recommendation that's being proposed is staff recommends holding the public hearing on December 14th to approve the taxi fare increase as proposed by the Public Transportation Committee. Staff recommends that we conduct another public hearing in fall of 2022 to consider the proposed additional increase of 25 cents for 2023. And part of the public hearing, there will be a resolution that would be required. So that will be in the next packet here on December 24th. So the attachments, obviously, that you have in here are the bus routes. There was the rider survey that was done, and then also the public hearing noticed that on December 14th, this will be a public hearing where anybody that is for, against, or otherwise will have the opportunity to kind of talk about it. So with that, I will do my best to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
I have a couple. Um, the, the comment about raising the fares will, they're expecting a decrease in ridership, but an increase in revenue?
Correct.
Is, I'd like to know how that could potentially affect our seniors and disabled.
Sure.
I don't know if there's a way that that can be determined. But if there's a de- decrease in ridership, is that attributed to the fact that it's, they don't have the money to, to, to do that? And then I'm just curious about raising the out of town by a dollar amount, a dollar a mile. How many, where out of town would the taxi go?
Um, I would have to verify that 100%, but I believe there is a set mileage that they're allowed to exceed. So in a, in a depends kind of twofold. One, it depends on how many, if it's the taxi service, what they have after, you know, what's the next stop they have to make? So if they don't have any thing stopped, and let's say they do have to go to, you know, potentially they could go to Lancaster or wherever. As long as it's not impeding on having to pick somebody up, I do believe they are allowed to, you know, kind of extend that range as far as the person is willing to pay. But that's something I can definitely have Howard kind of verify for you.
Okay, so, so that would bring me back to sort of to the same concern.
Yeah.
Um, that if it would be a negative effect to seniors or disabled.
Sure. So what I can try to do is I'll talk to Howard to see if he can actually get some concrete numbers for you for the public hearing about, you know, how many, when we're talking about the outside, what is that percentage or what has been the numbers?
And then one final question. If this is approved, what, what happens if there's more federal money that's allocated that, the, in, for 2022? I mean, th- this is sort of like whiplash.
Right.
Oh, didn't, didn't we?
Something happen or not happen, and all of a sudden, if there's more federal money funneling in, can that increase, the fare increase be?
Wasn't, didn't we totally abandon any fare assessment for?
Yeah, so that was so part of the, part of the federal money.
The federal money subsidized the entire amount, so we didn't even charge a fare.
Right.
During COVID. So I would assume if we got money again specifically for that, that would be?
You, you'd have a couple of options, I think, that you could consider. One is if there is additional funding and it doesn't, as kind of Council President Dos indicated, it's not earmarked for, you have to use it for offsetting cost or whatever. Then it's a question more or less for the council and probably UW-Platteville is, as you saw with the last budget in 2021, in this budget we're in right now, we did not have to levy tax support to cover it because of the grant funding. So that's one option you can do. Or the other option is you can indicate, Kathy, is if there is this additional funding, you could talk about, you probably wouldn't be able to do it into perpetuity, but you could provide some form of a, you know, gap for two years. You're going to reduce the cost and then it goes back up something along those lines. Yep.
I get, that's all I get. Okay, anybody else with questions on the shared ride taxi or the fixed route bus system and fare increases? Otherwise, that will be scheduled for public hearing for our meeting on Tuesday, December 14th.
Correct. And if any questions come up, by all means, email me and Howard, and we'll kind of detail that information, have that available. Correct. And if any questions come up, by all means, email me and Howard, and we'll kind of detail that information, have that available for you at the public hearing.
Okay, the next item on the agenda then is resolution, the fee schedule for the year. Yeah, Candace, are you, you're coming forward?
Thank you. All right, so this would be a resolution to look at the two thousand and twenty-two fee schedule year. Nothing would change for the remainder of this current year. So annually, the staff reviews the fees charged by the city of Platteville for various licenses, permits, inspections, programming, et cetera. And they've suggested the following changes, which are also in your packet. You'll see the whole entire fee schedule kind of laid out there. I'm just going to walk you through what those changes look like and what's been proposed. For page one and two, the administration fee schedule, it would be an increase to one-year operator's license for twenty-three dollars, or two twenty-three dollars, a two-year operator license fee to thirty-three dollars, the late fee for dog license to twenty dollars, taxi and/or taxi driver license to thirteen dollars, and property information search fee to thirty dollars. On page five, the fire department. On this page, there were some terms updated. We recently did quite a bit of changing to that particular chapter in our municipal code. So we changed some terms to update that to go along with our ordinance as it is, and the addition of a permit for a prescribed vegetation management burn of twenty dot, twenty-five dollars. Incident reports, ten dollars each, photographs, probably in a CD form, would be fifteen dollars each, and postage would be actual cost, and nuisance fire department response is seven hundred and fifty dollars. And along with the incident reports and photographs, basically, I believe the fire chief's goal there was to sort of match what the police department also does, so that we're the same across the board. And page seven and eight for museum, it would be increase to adult admission to twelve dollars, senior admission to ten dollars, children's admission to six dollars, family admission with mind tour to thirty-seven dollars, adult season pass to thirty-six dollars, children's season pass to eighteen dollars, and the addition of a senior season pass for thirty dollars. They would be looking to remove a senior group tour as a fee, and then they also wanted to break out the frozen mind tour into age groups with adults at twelve dollars, seniors ten dollars, children six dollars, and also do the same to the haunted mind tour at, with adults at fourteen, seniors at ten, children at seven dollars and fifty cents. And they are also looking to increase the holiday horse-drawn carriage rides per carriage to a hundred and twenty dollars. On page nine through eleven, this would be the park and recreation department. Increase of auditorium fees, the general use to a hundred and fifty dollars, nonprofit use to seventy-five, and rehearsal use to forty dollars. Increase of council chamber fees, general use to seventy-five dollars, nonprofit use thirty-five dollars, and the performance package to nine hundred dollars. Remove west and east hall rental fees, so this would be at the Brasky Center. They kind of looked at doing different things there with the way the, the use has been going over there. So they, the addition of the Brasky Center fees for hall rental is based on a number of people is what they're proposing at this point, for zero to fifty at a hundred, and this is for half of the building, as I understand, to a hundred and fifty dollars, fifty-one to a hundred people at two hundred dollars, a hundred and one to a hundred and fifty people at two hundred and fifty dollars. The Brasky Event Center as a whole building would be zero to a hundred people at three hundred dollars, a hundred and one to two hundred people at four hundred dollars, and two hundred and one to three hundred people at five hundred dollars. They have removed the kitchen use fee, as this has now been incorporated into the rental fees as a whole. And the addition of pickleball courts, as first come, first served is what they've indicated, and increase the pool pass, as Adam indicated earlier. For an additional member pays the family rate to twenty-five dollars, and individual daily pass to four dollars. Increase in recreational program fees, the tier one is twenty-five dollars for residents of Platteville and forty dollars for non-residents. Tier number two would be thirty-five dollars to residents and fifty dollars to non-residents. And then the addition of tier number three for forty-five dollars to residents and sixty dollars to non-residents. And then the last proposed change would be to the public works and cemetery on page fourteen to fifteen. This would be an increase in snow removal and ice pack snow to forty dollars. The addition of recycling bags for a dollar per bag and brush collection for twenty-five dollars. Note, proposed fees and new contracts wouldn't go into effect until September first of two thousand and twenty-two. An increase in one reserve stall per month to thirty-five dollars. The academic year to two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and the full year to three hundred and fifty-seven. They're also looking to add some additional contract options because they found over this, the last little bit, couple of years, that it's, it's been needed, that people have asked for different variations. So the addition of summer contract at ninety-five dollars, winter contract at a hundred and nineteen dollars, a spring contract at a hundred and forty-nine dollars, and a leasing contract at three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Cemetery grave lot increases are one grave site to eight hundred dollars, one cremation site to six hundred dollars, grave opening to eight hundred dollars. The additional fee for opening November first through March thirty-first to two hundred and fifty dollars. Cremation sites for infants, five hundred and fifty dollars. Increase in weekend holiday after hour grave openings to twelve hundred dollars in November first to thirty-first to two hundred and fifty, and cremation sites to two hundred, or excuse me, seven hundred and fifty. Addition of monument marking fee of thirty dollars.
So does anybody have any questions or comments on the changes, proposed changes to the fee schedule?
I'm curious as to the new addition of permit for prescribed vegetation management burn. What does that include?
Chief Simmons.
That goes along with the update to chapter twenty-four, where we allow it with their permit, and that basically is to cover the time for us to process the permit, go out and check the property, and verify with the neighbors that they actually are approving what it says on the application. It'd be similar to the street closing, we'll have to get permission from their neighbors, but we'll have a spot that'll actually have the neighbor, the address, and their phone number, so we can actually touch base with them and just make sure that it's a good experience for everybody, so that, but that the purpose of it is just to cover the time we anticipate it to, to take to process the application.
And then that, that is related to being able to do like small burns within your property and, and within the city?
Correct, for like the rain gardens.
Yeah.
Those areas.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, additional questions?
I have a question and a, and a comment. Back to the dog, dogs that we've been talking about. I noticed that there's an increase in late fee for dog license. I just want to make a comment. It's really hard to find how you get a dog license. So if the, when you look on the city website, I would like to see that may, be a little more obvious, because if we're expecting the members to have a dog license, we need to make it easier for them to apply for a license.
Brian, what is a nuisance fire department response?
Just. Sure. So that was also added in the, the.
I know, it says per chapter.
Yeah.
I'm just asking what it is.
So it, it could be a number of things. Basically, it'd be working with the fire department if someone's doing a disorderly act that wouldn't necessarily normally. So let's take example, a underground parking garage, and an individual decides they want to hop in their vehicle and do donuts in the underground parking alarm and activate the fire alarm system, which in turn causes a call out of the fire department to respond for the fire, possibly a fire there. We show up and it's just some kid doing donuts in the parking garage on private property. Typically, the police department can't do anything in that, and this allows us to, if we have to, have a way to let that individual know that, that is not acceptable to be, you know, to help recuperate some of the costs of that response of that apparatus and the equipment, so.
So this is not, someone calls the fire department, but they really didn't need it.
Correct. No.
Okay, anybody else with questions? Otherwise, this will go into our action agenda for our December meeting. Let's move on to item C, the development agreement with Quick, with QuickTrip for the Vision Drive extension. Joe?
Yeah, so as I mentioned with that redevelopment for that new shared, or excuse me, that new private driveway, well, will be a shared driveway to the south of the car wash, where the access to the diesel fueling station is. So the, the problem with that is that's proposed for the, that south property line and shared with additional land that the auto group owns. But right now, if you go out there, the actual extension of Vision Drive does not go that far south. The, the platted portion of the street extends well beyond that, but the actual physical street, the asphalt, the curb and gutter utility stops short of that. So in order to get to that new driveway, Vision Drive itself needs to be extended, the actual surfacing needs to be extended. So what the, the agreement is proposing is that QuickTrip as part of their development of that project will actually physically e- extend the street. But since it's a public street, the city will take over ownership and maintenance of that street once it is complete. So it's pretty straightforward agreement. I would mention though that this is a draft agreement in your packet. The city attorney did review it, and there are some, I think, minor changes that will be made prior to the adoption at the, the next meeting. Any question?
Hey, questions on this? Joe, I do have a question. So, yeah, right now, if, if I look at the, at Uber Socks Drive, which we're discontinuing, at the end of Uber Socks Drive, at the east end of Uber Socks Drive, there's adequate space for somebody to turn around. So there's some kind of turnaround provided, cul-de-sac or whatever you call it. So will the same be done here at the end? Because this, the city street will actually end, right? So we have snowplows that'll have to go in. We have, you know, people could likely just drive in that thinking it's a street. So what kind of turnaround is provided at the south end of Vision Drive so that our snowplows can make that turn? So that any person who finds themselves thinking it's a street and all of a sudden finding out that they're at the end of a street, what kind of provision do we have for a turnaround at the end of that street?
Yeah, right now, there, there is none proposed. The, the thinking was that, you know, eventually that street will be extended further to the south.
Understood.
But with the, the width of the street itself, plus the, the extension of that private drive, that there will be enough radius provided within that area to allow for a vehicle to turn around.
Including a fire truck?
Yeah, well, that's part of the, you know, that access agreement that we had talked about, the memorandum of agreement.
No, I know, but that goes to Kunis. I'm talking about at the end of the street.
But the, the fire truck could actually use that access drive, just like a semi that's coming in to fuel their, their vehicle that they could drive in through that property.
It's just that lately I've been out there and I see that we have folks who come off the highway with various items, and I don't know why they decide to pull into that street and they're parking at the end of it, and then I see people exercising their dogs or just exercising in general or whatever at the end of that street, kind of parking there. Now, maybe it's because it lends itself to that right now, but I do have a concern about if I were to go down that street, now do I turn into Kunis? How do our, and how do our snow removal groups make that turn there? Because I, that, we'll plow that street, we plow Vision Drive, right?
Correct. Yes.
We don't plow into QuickTrip, or we won't plow this other driveway, which is a private driveway. Right?
Correct. Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, Howard's not here to speak to it, but I think the, the thinking was that there would be enough room for them to maneuver.
Well, I'm raising that, so have him address that. Any other questions? And we'll move along to the next item on our agenda, which is resolution for a conditional use permit at three forty-five West Main Street for a quilting retreat house. And Joe, I think we have you there too.
Yes. Yeah, so the, the applicants are, are here as well for, if you have any questions, but Richard, Carol, Lon are interested in purchasing the property at three forty-five West Main Street. It's, it's a single-family home. As, as you mentioned, their, their intent for using that would be for a quilting retreat house or a retreat house that people could basically rent the house, use it for having quilting events, a group of people would get together, work on their quilting. Theoretically, they could use it for other similar activities, but that's the, the primary intent behind it. She obviously owns the quilting shop here on Main Street. So she attends that. I know other people that do similar things in other communities as well, but they, they get together, they work on that, they stay overnight there, so they, they would obviously be using it as a place to sleep. There would be a kitchen facilities there, meals would not be provided as part of that, but they could have the kitchen available to cook their own meals, or they could go out to eat, you know. A combination of the two would probably be likely, but it'd be a multi-day event, you know, a couple of days up to a week, where this would be available for them to use. So under our ordinance, it, it's, there are several similar activities that are kind of identified, a bed and breakfast, rooming houses, guest houses, that type of thing in that ordinance, and those are, a conditional use permit is required, so that's why we're classifying it as a, similar to a bed and breakfast or a guest house. So one of the things that we want to look at is to make sure that, you know, for the, the people using that, the guests, that there's adequate parking available, so they're not creating a problem for the neighborhood. There is a circular drive along the front of that building, the property that could be used easily for three cars, four probably, if they're small and you, and you put them in coordinated effort. There's additional garage to the back and parking off to the side of the garage, so there's plenty of vehicle spaces available for those folks to use. They're guessing they could get up to ten people that could be accommodated, obviously, or it could be less than that as well. We're assuming some of those people would be driving together to that event, so they wouldn't all have a vehicle. I, I do think there's plenty of space available. You know, this is not going to be a drastic change to, you know, fraternity house or other property, residential properties that are common in that, that neighborhood. So I do not see this as being a, a negative impact on, on that neighborhood. It seems like a, a good use for that, that house. It's got a lot of large open rooms, it's got plenty of bathrooms, plenty of bedrooms, so it would be a, a good building for that proposed use. So because the, the council has canceled that second meeting in December, we won't have that one, so we're actually bringing this forward before it goes to the Platteville Commission. So the Platteville Commission will consider this at the December sixth meeting, and then it will come back to the council for final action. Any?
Any questions of Joe? Otherwise, the applicant is here. Any questions of Joe? Otherwise, the applicant is here. Potential Rich and Carol Long are here, if anybody has questions that they might want to ask. You guys want to come up and introduce yourselves so that you get to be on camera? We'll get Jody to.
Hi, I'm Carol Long and I own Hidden Quilts on Main Street.
I'm Richard, I own Long seventy-six, Long's Car Care on Main Street. This is a perfect fit.
Right, I think you're both there to watch it out, watch out for it.
And like Joe said, there's plenty of parking.
Yeah, we have a overhead picture. Okay, anybody with questions of the lawns?
Um, I was just wondering, so is it just specifically something you rent out? For quilting activities or could it be like where? You know, you have a group of of friends or something that just want to rent out the, you know, a place for like a weekend getaway?
Right, it could be used for any of that.
Okay.
The quilting, basically the quilting, I get to do a retreat once a year. And I look forward to it from the minute I come back and can't wait to do it for the next year. It's just a way to get away from everything. You can work on your own projects, I don't have to work on the models for the store and that kind of thing. And it's just a good way to socialize and have fun and and relax for a while.
And it's pretty common.
It could be any kind of group, you could scrapbooking, embroidery guild. Parents coming for something at the college, I mean, anything like that.
It's more like an Airbnb as opposed to a bed and breakfast. Like you don't certainly, you don't serve food.
No.
They would be in.
We don't serve the food, we have everything there as far as the equipment that they would need. They can furnish their own food and prepare themselves.
We'll see you, some of us will see you again at the plant commission and then this will be on for. We assume it'll be on for action at the December fourteenth meeting, because this this doesn't require a public hearing.
Yes.
It does, it's so it will be a public hearing, so it'll be at the beginning of the meeting like we had the public hearings tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, the next item on our agenda is resolution. CDBG dash CV, application for inclusive playground and trail extension. So, Joe.
Yeah, so when we had the conversation regarding the location of the inclusive playground in Smith Park. We we did mention that staff is working on some some grants or a potential grant to help fund that project. And that is a community development block grant, it's a coronavirus program, it's a new. A portion of the CDBG program that just came out, obviously in relation to the pandemic. The cities received several CDBG grants in the past, we've been fortunate to do that, but. For the council members that have been involved in that before, you can probably remember that there's a lot of paperwork, a lot of requirements that go along with those types of grants. So we wanted to get in front of you some of those requirements, when it says resolution, there are actually a couple of resolutions. And there's some requirements that the council is required to take action on as part of that grant application. One of those you actually have have to authorize this middle of the application itself for the grant as a resolution. You also also have to, even though there isn't the see, the coronavirus program, there isn't a required match. But you still have to approve a resolution that says funds will be available to cover the cost of the the project. If the grant funds do not cover the cost of the project. In this case, we're we're assuming that between the grant and the fundraising that is being undertaken will. Us of that, but you still have to approve the resolution that says you'll cover that gap. Basically, they don't want to. Commit funds to this project and find out it's not going to happen. There's also a a resolution where the city adopts a policy prohibiting the use of excessive force. And the barring of entrances, exits for nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. This one, we we actually approved this a few years back, but they did change some of the language and. The code references, so I thought to be safe, we better re-adopt it so it doesn't get thrown out on a technicality. We also do have to hold a public hearing before we submit this application. So that will be a scheduled public hearing at the December fourteenth meeting. And there are some other, obviously, documents that the council president will have to sign and authorize, but they don't actually require. A council approval. If I do find out anything else as I'm working on the application, don't be surprised if there's an additional resolution that pops up before the fourteenth. But like I said, there's a, there's a lot of paperwork that comes with it. But if we can get it, it'd be well worth it.
Hey, questions on this? I know that I I recall other CDBG grants and it seemed like we were always having public hearings and doing things.
Yeah, you have to hold a public hearing before you submit the application, and if you get the grant, you have to have a public hearing somewhere during the project as well.
Hey, anybody with any questions? Otherwise, we'll see this as public hearing.
I do have just, because I'm not familiar with these grants. I'm assuming before we approve this, there would be a dollar amount. If we're approving an application, a grant application. Would have the dollar amount of the request or, that's what I'm saying, I don't know.
Yeah, the application itself will have a, you you have to submit a most project budget, we just haven't finalized the numbers yet. And then the the resolution will have, basically, it's a up to amount that the city's willing.
Asking for.
So then the other, the other part of that is that we would be agreeing. To come up with a match for the city. And what if the fundraising group? Isn't able to do that? Is the city on the hook or? Do we not accept it if it's offered? I mean, what what would our options?
You definitely have some options, yeah. I mean, essentially, if if, you know, the match is. The fundraising efforts or is a match that we feel is a city we can accomplish, then just like you said, it's we then would have to say we can't match that. The grant, then we wouldn't be awarded it.
Yep.
Okay, uh, next item on our information discussion schedule is the City of Platteville Employee Handbook. Floating holiday and vacation allotment change.
Very well done, that's a lot of, it's a big sentence there. So, the City of Platteville Employee Handbook went under a major revision in two thousand and nineteen, so several policies were either outdated or moved. Updated to comply with federal and state laws or added procedures were being followed but not established within the handbook. So in two thousand and twenty-one, obviously with the creation of the Human Resource Specialist Position, one of the onboarding priorities has been to review the City of Platteville Employee Handbook. For potential updates and or changes, so that's one of the things that potentially in either two thousand and twenty-three, we'll be looking at every three years, you want to kind of go through the handbook. And do a full deep dive, but this was kind of a quick review. So one of the things, obviously, speaking with directors, supervisors and managers, they continue to express struggles that they're having with recruitment, retention and engagement. This is also a common talking point on many of the League of Wisconsin municipalities and Wisconsin City Manager Association calls I participate in. As well as a lot of the conferences I've attended, this has been kind of a continual talking point in how you can be more. You know, continue to look at recruitment methods and engagement methods to kind of continue to keep employees. In effort to improve the City of Platteville's recruitment, retention and engagement. Human Resource Specialist Chad Wilson and I have been working with department directors, supervisors and managers. On a review of our floating holiday and vacation allotments. So floating holiday, below is the current policy regarding the floating holiday for the City of Platteville, which can be found on page fourteen of the employee handbook. To try to summarize, essentially, employees are given sixteen hours that they can utilize as floating holidays. This has been a discussion in multiple kind of conferences and meetings I've been at that is part of kind of a diversity, equity and inclusion. You know, initiative, there has been multiple municipalities that have looked at increasing the amount of floating holiday that can be utilized to cover. You know, multiple events that fall outside of the typical holidays, you know, if if they want to observe, for instance. Martin Luther King Day or Juneteenth, that has now kind of become that, as well as anything, whether it be Kwanzaa, you know, a particular different religion that they celebrate. Or, you know, other type of event, community service, this has been something that a lot of municipalities have been looking at as a potential to increase. So after a discussion with HR and department directors. I have approved a proposal to come in front of you to increase the number of hours from sixteen to thirty-two. Again, the main reason for the for this approval is in recognition of the City of Platteville's commitment to inclusion, diversity and equity. Known to some other organizations, personal holidays, our floating holiday leave is provided to allow staff the opportunity to observe dates and events. That have a personal meaning to the employee. So again, in researching other municipalities, I found the following municipalities currently allow thirty-two hours for floating holidays. You can see the list there, the Village of Baldwin, the City of Berlin, Mozzanie, the Village of Mount Horeb, the Village of Oregon, the City of Oshkosh. The City of Ripon and the Village of Swamaco are a couple of examples for you guys. So then the other thing that we also looked at too was vacation leave. So below is the current policy regarding vacation leave for the City of Platteville, which can be found on page fifteen of the employee handbook. So as you can see, it goes from the first year through six years. We allow an annual hours of vacation of eighty, and then after the seventh year through fourteen years, it goes to a hundred and twenty. Fifteen through twenty then is a hundred and sixty, and then the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, it kind of goes up. So obviously, to assist in recruitment, recruitment, retention and engagement initiatives, it's vital employees receive some form of incentive or recognition for their service. After discussing with HR and department directors, I've approved a proposal again to come in front of you to alter the vacation structure. The new vacation structure would eliminate the seven-year waiting period between annual allotment increases. Provide smaller increases throughout an employee's career and allow them to send the, to see those additional full weeks of vacation earlier in their career. Below council members will find a table representing the proposed change to the vacation allotment, so. As you can see, what it kind of does is it flips it almost, so that instead of having to wait seven years to receive kind of a bump. You get an incremental bump every year that you're here, again, just another kind of incentive opportunity to try to keep. Employees here so that they're not having to wait almost seven years before they see an additional week of vacation. Obviously, in some of the previous municipalities I have worked in, this has kind of been in the vacation structure that I have seen, so that's why it's one that's being proposed. So just looking at overall the budget and fiscal impacts and reviewing the proposal with department directors, supervisors and managers. It is anticipated this will have limited impact on the budgetary figures. As again, any approved leave will have to be authorized by the employee's direct supervisor, so therefore. If there are issues that we're having with staffing, you're not going to obviously be approving additional requests, the option is going to be there. But again, from a financial standpoint, we still have to be able to operate the city, so. This is not something that we anticipate or that I anticipate is going to have an impact on the budget, it's again, just going to give an option for. The ability for employees to see a little bit more bump in their ability to take vacation, and if that's available, we can certainly grant it. As well as allowing them kind of an additional option for kind of floating holidays to do things that are more either community service based. Or diversity and inclusive bases, again, we want to try to be more welcoming community. So potentially, this will be back here on the December fourteenth meeting for kind of action, if that is so choose by the council, but. And kind of looking at, you know, what we've talked with with directors and also with human resources, we think this is a move that can kind of help. Well, obviously, as we continue to recruit and this has a very limited budget impact, that doesn't have to be salary based, so. Any questions, comments or concerns?
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did you include the library director?
Yes, so this would also go, this would have, this would be something that they would have the option to include. I think obviously that is something that the library technically has their own employee handbook, but they tend to have everything included in here. But yes, this was something that we have included the library director in this conversation, I think they would be looking to follow this model as well.
Any other questions? Okay, if you have questions on this, after you take a look at it.
Yes.
Then make sure and get to Adam and ask those questions. Because again, this will be back on our agenda for December fourteenth, we only have the one meeting in December. And I see in the proposal that you would like to implement this for January first.
Correct.
Which makes it a pretty tight timeline, so if you have questions about this. Make sure and see Adam about that. And so that we can. Know if we can take action at the next meeting, okay? Well, that's the end of our agenda and. I only believe I need one more motion.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, okay, we have a motion by Ken and a cat, a second by Kathy to adjourn, I'm going to say all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Candace, you can write that down as unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.